All right. Good evening, welcome to the Regular Planning Commission Meeting, Grand Blank Township, June 1st, 2023. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have our newest Planning Commission member.
Yeah, that was one other thing I was gonna have you put under new business was...
We won't forget about it.
Okay.
We'll get to them quicker than that.
Okay.
Ms. Coulter, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Yacho. My brain is cooked.
Blame the heat.
Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Bush. In rehearse. Our zoning and planning, Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Jeremy Smith. And from our consultant is?
Andy Amott.
Andy Amott.
Nice to see you all again.
Very good. I think we'll do, right now, Andy, if just maybe as a way of introduction, give us a minute or two of what your background is, why you wanna be here?
Thank you for the warm welcome. And the warning, I suppose. No, my name's Andy Andre, been a resident of the township now going on for 18 years. It's something that all of a sudden has flown by, and so my background is engineering and land planning and development, and there's been times where I've been on the other side of this Planning Commission on some projects, and so with taking the background that I have and, you know, the, my, you know, calling Grand Blank Township home, really wanted to have an opportunity to be involved, give back and see the continued development of the township and being able to serve the citizens and businesses of the township. So I thought it was a really good opportunity. I'm at that point in my career where I've had 20-plus years' experience as a licensed professional engineer, as well as now my last one is gonna be graduating next year, my last kid, and so, not that I have extra time, but, you know, once a month and every time in between. So I, I'm very pleased to, you know, be welcomed to the Planning Commission.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks for being here. All right, next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. We do have one addition, we're gonna add an item 7C. We're gonna need to add a new site plan committee member since Mr. Banderski has stepped down on both the Planning Commission and Site Plan Review Committee. So we'll add a seven, item 7C to go over that. Any other changes to the agenda?
None.
Anyone?
Vote for approval.
Motion for approval of this evening's agenda as amended, support by Mr. Hoffman. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Next item is approval of the minutes from May 4th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I've read the minutes along with Mr. Banderski before he retired, and I find those to be correct, so I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from May 4th, 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Yacho, with support by Mr. Bush. Is that correct? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. This is an opportunity for public comment. Maybe you're making them fill out a card, they don't want...
I, you know, I think we scared them away.
No, summertime is just slow.
Yep.
Seeing that there's no public here in attendance, we'll move past that. I didn't see any correspondence.
None.
We don't have any old business.
None.
Takes us to new business. Zoning case 674G text amendment. Mr. Smith, did you wanna?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, May 4th meeting, we discussed the memorandum you have in front of you for the public hearing. Basically what it is, is that when there's a site plan review, either a, by the Site Plan Review Committee or by the full Planning Commission, if there needs to be a six-month extension, the first six months I can give, and then if they need an additional six months for a total of two years in total of approvals before they get fully underway for their project, we have the ability to do that now. And then if you guys decide that you don't wanna give them an additional six months, we can discuss it at that time. But I think we discussed this at length at the last meeting, and we're just hoping for, we can push this through for approval to, or a recommendation to the Township Board.
Any comments from Planning Commission members? So the change is the first six months would be...
Basically, the first six months, I can do it in-house, and if they need an additional six months for two, two years total, then they would have to come before you guys at the 18-month mark, and you guys could grant the additional six months if this board felt it was warranted.
Did we do the correspondence? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hoffman?
Johnson.
Johnson.
Is there gonna be correspondence if they, the applicant approaches you for the six-month extension on the administrative side?
Yes, yes. I will make sure that I bring that up under committee reports or somewhere on the agenda. I'll make sure that that's added in there if that, it does arise.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, someone like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Township Board? Is that what it says?
May I? I know there's no one here, but don't you have to open it to public and then close it to public? It's a public hearing? Just to be...
Yeah, you can, yeah, there's no public, so you can open and close the public hearing if you'd like.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
I just did not want...
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, is there anyone present who would like to address the Planning Commission meeting? I don't see anyone.
I would like to make a motion to approve the zoning case 674 text amendment.
Recommend to...
Send it to the board?
Recommend to Township Board.
Oh, we should have that on there. I'm sorry about that. Send it to the board for recommendation for approval.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman to recommend approval to the Township Board, support by Mr. Yacho. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Item B, another text amendment discussion.
Yes. Do you wanna, you want me to start it, or you wanna start it, or?
You can start.
Okay. So this board, and the Township Board, did grant my wishes to allow for accessory vehicles to be parked in the driveway for the April 1st to November 1st, basically season for those type of accessory vehicles. Over the last, since we changed it last year, so we had one, we've had one full year on it, plus a couple months now in this year, my code enforcement officers have said that there's been some discrepancies in some places where there, we're trying to eliminate some discrepancy, and we wanna make sure that this is all black and white. So the removal of the red strikeout and the addition of the green, we feel is clarification off of where these things can be parked during that April 1st to November 1st time period. Basically, they are allowed to be parked in the driveway only and cannot be parked in the road.
Any discussion?
Anything to add?
The cross-out of snowmobiles and boats, do they still belong in the category with recreational vehicles then?
Yes, and that was what I was gonna get to, too, was that we did just make things more consistent by just including the umbrella term recreational vehicle, which snowmobiles and boats fall under in the definitions.
Yep. The definition is very extensive in the book, so we just feel, instead of adding things into it, we'll just strike that on, just say, see definitions and be done with it.
Makes perfect sense. Any other comments, discussion? So we go, have to go through the public hearing?
So this, so this is just discussion today, so next month, we would, we would create a public hearing, so I just, today, I just need a motion from everybody to push it forward to a public hearing next month.
Need a motion for that, or just...
I would like a motion, so roll call, or not a roll call, but an all, Mr. Yacho.
I have a question to, to make sure we don't get in the weeds again. I have two driveways. I have 300-foot affrontage, and I have two driveways, one to my house, one to my pole I don't park my, any recreational vehicles in, in the front yard of my home, but I do have a utility trailer, for instance, and a boat that would be in front of my barn. So how does that, that situation fit into this policy?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, my, my understanding is if as long as it's an approved surface, then it would be...
Yeah, if it's a driveway that's of a, of a material that we recognize as a driveway, then you can park it there in, with, in front of your house, front building line, in one of those summer months, the April 1st through, or April to November, but if it's, but if it's the remaining months, you would need to put that further in your backyard. It couldn't be stored in the driveway.
My pole barn is behind the front house.
That was what I was gonna get to, so he, in this instance, I think he would be okay because his barn is, sits back behind...
Behind the front building line.
Right, so if the driveway's, you know, still not in front of the house, then he would still be okay because it would be technically side yard.
Yeah, unless your driveway's like super close to the lot line, because I think it needs to adhere to the setbacks, but it sounds like you've got some space.
He does, yes.
Cool.
Yep, so in that case, Mr. Yacho, I believe you'd be...
I just, not as much for myself, but for the code enforcement.
No, no, that's, that's a good question to ask, cuz that's one thing that, as long as we all agree that that's, that's what we all agree to, then that's, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay?
Yep.
Any other?
Mr. Chair, question for staff?
Mr. Andre?
Was there anything I see that specifically calls out driveway as a location for parking? Is there anything to preclude somebody from parking a recreational vehicle in a public street in front of their house?
Right, at the very, the last line of the green, parking of a recreational vehicle on a street at any time is prohibited.
Okay, even if it's a public street?
Yes, because it's an accessory vehicle that should not be allowed to be parked in a public street. It doesn't have a motor. Cars, trucks, if it has an engine and can move down the road with four tires or however many tires it has, are allowed to be parked in the road unless it becomes a nuisance or it's public safety issue, then it's a police matter. Not properly tags, insurance, inoperable, then the police will get involved, but accessory vehicles would not be allowed to be parked in the road at any time.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I was, I was just gonna say, motorhomes are recognized as a recreational vehicle, so that would be kind of the one exception of a vehicle with an engine would not be allowed to be parked on the street now because of this ordinance.
If I stand corrected, though.
And I don't know if that was even allowed anyways prior to this.
We, I, that I don't know, but...
Why not?
Not, no, not really. If you've got a half million or million-dollar motorhome, you're typically not parking it in the street anyways cuz somebody's gonna inevitably sideswipe it, so.
Okay, someone wanna make a motion to move this to what?
Public.
Public hearing.
Recommend for public hearing next month.
Planning Commission meeting?
Yep.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Bush, as noted, support, I'll support by Mr. Johnson. Any other discussion? If not, votes in order, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. All right, new item we added to our agenda, Site Plan Review. Mr. Banderski's been on there a while now.
Yeah, so with Mr. Banderski stepping down and Mr. Andre taking over for that, there is a, a void in our three-member Site Plan Review Committee headed by Mr. Gellings, and Mr. Johnson's also on there, so we have a vacancy, so it's up to this board to fill that vacancy.
I'd like, I'd like to be considered for that vacancy.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Mr. Bush?
Are you the alternate now?
No. Mr. Bush was on there years ago, right?
I served six years on the Site Plan Review. Then I went to Township Board, so I couldn't anymore.
I think either would do a very good job. Flip a coin?
How do we?
I would, I mean, we can do...
You would have an election process, can you do chairs here? Just recommends and then we vote. Any comments from any of the other Planning Commission members?
Take, kinda take the chair here and just say...
We need to ask whether Republican or Democrat?
Right.
Here, Mr. Yacho. Hold on for a second.
I guess I'll ask a question. How long, is there, is it a term that it's served for, or?
I would say...
Is there, is this a term that it's served for, a certain term?
This is until your tenure, either you step down or you're asked to not be appointed again, so this is something that, this is an ongoing term, we never really had any other issues. We have the need for an alternate, and Mr. Hoffman, you are currently our alternate.
Oh, very nice.
I didn't know if you're aware of that or not, but that, you are currently the alternate, so.
So I, I will mention, as you had said, both candidates, I'm sure, would do a fine job on it. I will have to say that I have definitely witnessed Mr. Bush's thoroughness of catching things, looking at things, documenting things. I just have not, I'm not saying that you wouldn't do it, Mr. Yacho, but I don't know that it could be left in, in better hands. I'm very, I feel very comfortable if I'm in the room, and he is also, just like if you were in the room, and you know, that you know what to do, what to watch for, what to make notes of, and very thorough. I mean, almost over-thorough type of situations, which I don't think we could complain about, so I, I would say.
I just think that I give a different perspective to, to the Planning Commission and the Site Plan from the standpoint of, I'm not an engineer, I'm a longtime resident.
Mr. Chairman, we can, we can do this a couple different ways. We can say, there's a nomination on the floor for Mr. Yacho or Mr. Bush, whoever wants to go first, and then everybody can say, yes, no, yes, no, or we can do secret ballot, we can do however you guys decide you wanna do this. I don't want any feelings hurt, I, we don't, we don't want any, we don't want a mess, we don't want anything like that, so however you guys decide you wanna do this, I mean, you can write names on a piece of paper and fold them in half and hand them to me, and I'll read them aloud. I don't, and I'll mix them up, and I don't care how we do it. It, it's up to you guys how you wanna do this.
And this is properly, this board appoints that?
It's a, it's a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, so that's why the Planning Commission has the, the duty of appointing their subcommittee members.
I just wanna say, I appreciate both stepping forward and...
Yeah, absolutely.
It's great, cuz I mean, we've been in the other position, some had to twist a few arms in the past, so.
Right.
Typically, lately, we've been doing Site Plan Review meetings at 6:00.
Correct.
Prior to this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So it works out pretty good.
Right.
Years ago, we used to do them at 7:00 AM.
Right, and we can...
It's better now than it was.
Right. Well, and then the nice thing is, too, is if we have something that comes up and it needs to be moved forward quicker, as long as the committee members, myself and the applicant are available, and we have enough time for me to do a review and things of that sort, we can make these go quicker. We haven't had the need for that since I've been here, but if we need to, it may not just be once a month, it may be, if we have a busy time, it might be two or three times a month, but we would do that when everybody's available. It's not, you know, it's not gonna, it doesn't always have to be at 6:00, is my point. If everybody's available at noon on a Tuesday, we could do it there as well, so just to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, we have had some other needs.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question.
Is there a limit to the number of members of the Site Plan Review Committee?
I mean, could we expand the number of members?
We, it was always told to me it's three.
I mean, if there's no rule that's been adopted or in the ordinance or elsewhere, you might wanna consider that.
I would have to verify that, I, that I don't know. It's, it's meant to move things quicker, it's meant to, we have to have, in case there's a, you know, a tie, so there's always a tiebreaker, that I do know, but as far as the number, three or five, that I don't know, I, I'd have to look into that, so I apologize, I don't have that answer tonight, but we can address that down the road if something happens.
Wouldn't five start bumping into the meeting rules of...
Yeah, it's getting...
Open, you mean the open meetings?
Yeah. I mean, they're open anyways.
Say three?
Yeah. Okay, so it does, so...
Three, so, so the ordinance says the Site Plan Review Committee comprised of three members and one alternate of the Planning Commission, appointed annually by the Planning Commission Chairperson.
Appointed annually?
By the chairperson, too.
Not even a vote, though.
Oh, it's not?
It says by the, yeah, the ordinance does say, appointed annually by the Planning Commission Chairperson, and that's for the alternate.
As well? Just the alternate?
It says that's just for the alternate, so...
So the, so the appointments by the board of the Planning Commission, and then the alternate is approved by the...
That's how I'm reading it.
By, by the chair.
I don't know if that's different than what's been done in the past, but...
If it's, that's black and white in the ordinance books, so we get three, and then...
And then the chairperson...
Designates the alternate.
So we have to have... Real quick, I guess the one thing, though, is it doesn't specify how the three members, the three regular members are appointed, so I think it's possible that this language means all members are appointed annually by the Planning Commission Chairperson. Is that, does that make sense?
This is the first time this has come up?
This is the first time it's come up, okay.
It never came up on a yearly basis, so that doesn't make sense.
Right, so that's...
Okay, got it, so, so because regular members don't come up on a year-to-year basis, do you think the, the alternate is what?
That's, that makes sense to me.
Okay, that makes sense, too. It's the first time I've ever read this provision, I apologize.
Right, so I...
Mr. Yacho, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, I, I do recognize and appreciate all the input Mr. Bush has given, his expertise in this field and so on, and to make it simple, I'll just withdraw my request.
I've got a question, maybe it's for Mr. Hoffman. Is there any interest in having Mr. Yacho as the alternate? You, that way, would have an opportunity to participate on somewhat of a regular basis if one of us can't make it.
Yep.
Would sound like a reasonable thing for...
Send you to the Ukraine.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. All right, so we're gonna have Mr. Bush as our regular, permanent member, Mr. Yacho as the alternate if one of us can't make it.
Can we have a, just have a motion, somebody say, motion to...
I'll make a motion. Motion by Mr. Johnson. As we discuss, support by Mr. Hoffman. All those in favor, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes either 5-0 or 7-0. All right, committee reports would be up next. We have, there's no site plan.
We didn't do any site plan reviews this, this evening?
Sarah's not here.
Sarah's not here.
Board of Appeals?
We haven't, we haven't had a ZVA meeting since September of last year.
Can I get on that committee?
We canceled June, June's, June 20th, I believe, was the date, and that's been canceled already as well, so. That means that what we've been doing here, and all these text amendments that you have all been discussing over the last few, since we did the master plan, they're working, and they're working well. And as you see, we've done, you know, the one we did today, we're discussing, is it needed a little bit of a change, and that's no big deal, we can always bring these things back and modify and clarify, so I think everything's working well, and...
Anything else from Planning and Zoning?
Um...
I heard rumor of a site plan coming in.
Of?
Something coming back?
Oh, I did this, this afternoon, thank you. Randy Wise was, had gracefully bowed out because of construction costs. They have since submitted new site plans in today to reduce the size of the building and reduce the size of the parking lot to help combat those costs, so, and they're also doing a detention pond instead of underground detention, so they feel that that's a better option now, so you will see that in, possibly in July, most likely in July, cuz it shouldn't have changed that much, so my review for the last one is already done, but it'll modify a little bit, so it should be in, at the July meeting.
Mr. Johnson, you have a question?
Did we talk about a Sullivan yet?
Yeah, last...
Sullivan was last month, yep. Mm-hmm.
You have plans?
For?
For the Sullivan?
Yeah, that was, that was already approved last month, yep.
That's right.
Yep, if you'd like to see him, I could show him to you sometime.
Yeah. Committee reports, I'd like to just let everybody know that the township does have a beautification program underway right now, I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but the township has, Mr. Bennett started and Melissa's heading up a citizens committee that we're gonna plant some flower beds in the township, one at the corner of Baldwin and Saginaw, two at Hill and 475, two at Dort and Grand Blank Road, and two at I-75 and Holly Road.
Mr. Yacho?
Yes. All those are the planters?
The planer boxes that they're also putting out.
Okay, so at, at, at Grand Blank, I mean, Hill and Fenton Road, there'll be two of those planters, they're self-watering planters, so...
Every two to three weeks, I believe, is what I was told, that they only need to be refilled with water.
And the other ones will be watered by the DPW, right?
That's, that was what I was...
And maintained by citizens. Elga Credit Union's gonna take the ones by their building.
Nice.
I think the one at Baldwin and Saginaw is gonna be from the retirement community to the east. Undetermined, oh, there's a church, I can't, Faith Lutheran, it's gonna do the ones at Grand Blank and Dort, and the ones at Grand Blank and... They're gonna do the ones at I-75 and Holly Road, and the ones at Dort and Grand Blank Road, that's undecided who's gonna do those, so if anybody knows, someone, a small group of people that would wanna volunteer for that, that would be an appropriate thing, welcome thing.
Made me think of something here that, I don't know if I should even bring it up right now, but as part of site plans in the past, when someone couldn't meet the requirements for putting all the trees on their site with the, their building net, there was a fund that was created where they could, don't put some... where they could, don't put some money in for trees. Is that money still around?
Yes.
From my understanding, no.
Oh, where is it?
I thought.
That I don't know, that I, I asked the question, and from my understanding.
You're absolutely right, Dan.
There was, and what was done with it, I, that I don't know, I'm coming.
Idea was to plant trees someplace and.
Sure, but in, but just, and I'm sure you're all aware that that, that provision in the ordinance is no longer exists, so we don't do that anymore, but.
We had a pretty good chunk of money in there for a while.
That I don't know either, I, I had asked the question because I believe one of you brought that up at a previous meeting when I first started here, and I asked, and they said, they, they didn't think that there was any money left in it, and I don't know what happened to it, so that's something, Mr. Bennett would have to.
Like I said, maybe you shouldn't have brought it up.
Well, it, it is what it is, I mean, I, I just, honestly, I don't know, it was before my time, and I, and I asked the question, and I was told that I don't think that there's anything in there any longer.
Alright. How about July sixth, planning commission meeting?
So the fourth of July is a couple of days before that, and I believe the fourth is on a Tuesday this year, okay, thank you. So with that, I didn't know if we were gonna be able to have a quorum for that week. So if everybody can be here on the sixth, we'll leave it on the sixth. If not, we can potentially move it to the following Thursday, just to keep it with Thursdays, which would be the thirteenth. But if everybody's here, everybody's here on the sixth, then. So one, two, three.
We'll be out of town on the sixth.
No Johnson?
I'll be here.
Floris, Andy?
I should be here.
Okay, Dan?
Sounds like we gotta leave it.
Yeah. Okay, and then I haven't talked to Larry or Sarah, I don't know if Sarah will be back yet with her, because I believe she had hip surgery. So she still may not be back, but it sounds like we would have a, we need at least five for a quorum, so it sounds like we've already got five here, so as long as everybody makes sure that they come and can be here for that meeting, then we'll, we'll just keep it as the sixth is planned.
And that'll be a public hearing?
That'll be the public hearing, that, that's kind of why I want to make sure that we're, the tax amendment, so that way I'm putting the right date in the paper, so if we're, we weren't gonna have people here, I could put it on the thirteenth. But since it sounds like we're gonna have a quorum, then I will still make it for the sixth.
Mr. Hoffman?
I believe I would like to make a motion to end the meeting.
End the meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman, support by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you.